Sorry to send, hey, Renan.
Okay.
Sorry to send John. I appreciate you for that. But when he said tiny house, it's been written down that way. I've never seen a tiny house down that road.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting, October 19th. We call it order at this time. So Mr. Slay is on the phone. Would one of you like to do the implication?
I'll do it.
Never mind. We got, we got somebody. You listen this time. Go ahead, Bob.
Everybody pray with me, please. I have your Father. We thank you for the many blessings you give us each and every day. We ask that you impart your wisdom on us today, that we do things in the best interest of, of the citizenship of Rankin County and our fellow counties. Lift up those that are needed, your, your love and grace during their difficult times, and that your healing hands be with the physicians as they, as they tend to these folks as well. We ask that you forgive us the many sins we committed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And we do have Mr. Slay, our board attorney, on speakerphone here. Glad to have you here.
Good morning.
Good morning. First thing we here, have here, I guess, Mr. Slay, you want to try to handle it? Or do you want me to handle it? Consideration potential action on selection of the Hart.
Yeah, Jared, I don't, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so if, if you don't mind, spot me a little grace. Tell me which, which item we're going to take up first.
Well, under UAA is potential action to select Hart as a successful bidder for Rankin County RFP.
Yes, sir. Okay, good, good. Yeah, I'll be glad to try to walk us through just quickly, sort of where we are.
Well, let me add, let me go tell you what else on here, so you know.
Okay.
It says, with ESNS selected as a first alternate bidder, an authorized board attorney and county minister entered negotiations with Hart to finalize all matters set forth with RFP and finalize the...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you know where we are?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
Where we were, gentlemen, at the last board meeting on the 14th, we went ahead and heard the report from the review committee that had been established. The recommendation from the review committee was to enter into negotiations with Hart Inter-Civic as the primary award recipient contingent upon a successful negotiation of all of the remaining terms and provisions that will be sorted out, such as the number of the units, the final price associated with those, and also the terms and provisions of the contract that would govern that relationship, both providing the units and then, of course, getting them properly programmed, getting them on the ground, getting all the associated paraphernalia that goes with them sorted out, and then some aspects of training and otherwise. A lot of stuff that has to be done on the backside of this. So really, the action that's before you today would simply be to acknowledge that Hart Inter-Civic is, in fact, has been identified as, like, the lowest and best bidder contingent upon all these other conditions. You guys will need to hear later the total amount that has been identified with the total number of units that we need, and all the associated contract terms and provisions have been worked out, and that you are now prepared to move forward with an official contract. So you would just simply be saying today, we're ready to move forward with Hart Inter-Civic, and we want to go forward on the negotiations.
Which one?
Sir.
All right. We have a gentleman here, though, Mr. Gaines, that's spoken with it. I think wanted to have, with another one of the companies that had something to say or ask, would like to address the board. So would you like to do that now?
Yeah.
But this time, I guess you don't, just keep it kind of brief, if you don't mind.
Tell your name and the business you represent.
This is Todd Mullen. I'm with RBM Consulting. And we had called and we saw the results from the committee. We had seen the pricing. We had some questions on the pricing because our pricing came in on a five-year basis at about $1.17 million, based on the committee's recommendations and what they had saw. When I looked at our numbers, our numbers actually are about $790,000. So there's quite a bit of discrepancy there. And if there's that much discrepancy in ours, what we had asked was if we could see everybody else's pricing, just to make sure that we're all comparing apples to apples. There are things within the contract, such as training, whether you want it full service or just train the trainer. So we, you know, we have full service in there. We just want to make sure that all the firmware and all of your costs are included in this pricing, because we don't think they are. At least on ours, it appeared to us to be off by about $300,000 to $400,000. I don't know why that was, but we can document it. And I just, I had asked if we could see the others. I was told that the county attorney was out of town, and I would be able to talk with him next week. That's going to be too late. And if you're going to make this decision, you want to make sure that you have all the facts in front of you, and the pricing is of the utmost importance. And I understand that when you come in at 1.17 versus about 700,000, there's, there's not a decision to be made. You're going to go with a $700,000 bid. So we want to make sure that our pricing is correct, and we are comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
Well, on the, our lowest cost bid, now, whether they messed up or not, if we decide going in, they're still obligated to this price, correct? Craig?
Jay, say that again for me, please.
If we select Hart and we go with their price that they quoted...
Yes, sir.
They're obligated to fulfill our contract at that price.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Now, here's the difference. What they quoted and what everybody's, numerically, what everybody was, their prices normalized to, was a 55-unit pricing structure. So you're, what you're looking at are costs associated with 55 units. If we go with, and so we know, and we know what that per-unit cost is, because that is in the bid. So they are on the hook for what they put in their bid as their per-unit cost, where we would see some discrepancy at some point, Jay, is in the number of units that we ultimately will want to secure. And we just don't know what that is at this time. So if the unit price, let's just put a number in there, if the unit price is $3,000, then you can do the math, 55 units times $3,000.
Right.
But there are other costs associated with it as well, that's also in the pricing structure. You know, software costs, five-year dollar-cost averaging cost numbers that are also in that, that our consultant walked through and normalized to all of that. But the per-unit cost, they are on the hook for.
Okay. And the per-unit cost, if you look at your cost breakdowns, they're very similar with each of the companies. Where your costs, where your costs are taken are in, after that first year, when you're paying for maintenance, when you're paying for ballots, when you're paying for all the other incidentals. And you get, again, you want to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. If someone's saying that, hey, our, our equipment doesn't need a maintenance contract, that's great. But something's going to go down with it, and you're going to have to replace something, so you're going to incur some costs there. With, with like our proposal, we had a full service, parts and labor included in there. So you don't have any more cost with our maintenance contract. If you wanted to pare that down, you could. If you said, hey, we're going to go and, you know, basically, you know, go without a maintenance contract, you could do that with us also. But if you're going to do that, you simply want to make sure you take those dollars out of the cost comparison that you're using. And I think that's where, that's one of the things that is in question. And when we asked for that information, we were not able to get to it. So I would ask that you hold off until we're able to at least come up with cost comparisons that are apples to apples, so you can make the most informed decisions possible. There is no rush. You're not going to use it for this election. So you have a little bit of time. And I know that this board is cost-conscious and wants to understand what their future costs are, and want to make sure that they're all there, and they would want to compare apples to apples.
That is a point.
Well, Todd, I, we do know, though, on the Hart, they told us upfront at book demos that we were not going to have a maintenance contract, because there's nothing to maintain other than swapping out batteries. So, I mean, I don't, other than that, what are you talking about?
Does that mean that nothing can go wrong with the equipment if a motherboard goes out? If some type of, it shorts out for, for one reason or another? When they go to turn it on in logic and accuracy, if it doesn't turn on, what do they do? Well, they have to call Hart, they have to have them fix it. And so they would send, probably send the equipment back to Hart, they would fix it, and they would charge you parts and labor and shipping. With our situation, we're going to come down, and we're going to make sure that all of your equipment is up and running, just like, but, but, but that's the situation that you have now. You want to make sure that all of your equipment is up and running. Again, if that's the way you want to do it, you could do it with both companies. We, we generally recommend full service, and that's the best way to do things. If you wanted to, you know, basically, I say self-insure. If you want to go without a maintenance contract, you can. That was not what was, what, you know, what we offered. It wasn't an option, really, in the, you know, I didn't read it as an option in the, you know, in the response. But you are getting that much more bang for your buck with us. But if you don't want to have it, again, you would have to compare both of them. I know Hart does offer maintenance. So if nothing goes wrong, why would they ever offer it? And in DeSoto County, they offered it as their main response. So if nothing ever goes wrong, why would they do that?
Well, they advised us that over a five-year period of time, the only thing we would need is batteries. And I'm not saying that we won't have a, you know, a machine breakdown that we may have to replace, but what's being bid here is that we're not going to need a maintenance contract.
My only comment...
Where we are, and I realize Mr. Mullen is, is there representing his company, and he's, obviously, he wants to do a good job and, and fight for every possibility that, that they could get the contract. But here's the, here's the reality. We have gone, you guys have been front and center on an extended, complicated, very well-managed project called an RFP. Probably one of the most extensive RFPs that I've ever seen. Very well put together and well thought out. You also had a group of individuals who are on the front lines of dealing with your election matters. You had all of the election commissioners invited. You had your IT folks. You had a very well-educated and well-experienced consultant. And you had others, the folks that have, that know about having to pay for all this, intimately involved in that process. And all of those people went through multiple demonstrations. At the end of the day, and I think this is the most telling thing, at the end of the day, every single person on the review committee named Hart Inter-Civic and their product as the best product for Rankin County. Not only that, you had a normalized cost proposal put together with all of these details that Mr. Mullen's talking about, all of that having already been analyzed. And at the end of the day, you had Hart shaking out as the lowest, and not just, not just the lowest, the lowest by a wide margin. Their normalized cost is slightly over half a million dollars for 55 units. Now, Mr. Mullen's price that he just gave you, that would be inclusive, his own calculations, now, after having gone back and looked at it, his own calculations, there's still almost $300 out of the game, $300,000.
Well, that's not right.
At this point, we've, we've covered the waterfront. We feel very strong about our recommendation. What you're being asked to do today, and what you're being, what's being suggested that you consider doing today, is to simply say, we believe at this stage that Hart is, in fact, the lowest and best, and we want to go now into a more refined process with Hart. You're not making an agreement. We want to go through a more refined process with Hart to get all of the details now put together for a total package that the board will then have to come back and approve a contract, a total cost amount per unit. Any maintenance issues that may pop up, that will be a part of the negotiation process. We'll look at that more thoroughly. So, you know, all we're talking about now is, do we think we have the best vendor for Rankin County, on a certain sense? Do we think we have them at the table, and can we reach an agreement with them? And I, I think at this point, it's safe to say that we feel very strongly unanimously, in fact, on the review committee, we feel very strongly that that's Hart and the Hart product.
So we, if, so in a sense, we do have an out if we can't negotiate everything like we...
Correct. It's one of the reasons, Jared, why you would be, also as a part of your motion, Jared, as a part of the motion that's being put forward, we're asking the board to go, to go ahead today and say that if, in fact, we are not able to arrive at a, at a workable solution with Hart, we don't have to go back through the RFP process. The second choice of the review committee would be ESNS. And so if, if negotiations break down with Hart, and we simply cannot get squared up with them, then instead of going back to the RFP, we move to ESNS for the purpose of seeing if we can get an arrangement with them.
Okay, I see.
That's the suggestion.
Right. You had a comment.
No, no. Craig has echoed, Craig has echoed what I said. We all agreed that Hart was, that had, was number one choice overall, even before we got to the cost, just the equipment itself, you know?
That's correct, yes.
And the use of work and stuff like that. So I think we're, we're being disingenuous to our whole process here, that if we don't move forward, at least try to work out a negotiation contract with Hart. I appreciate what Todd's here trying to accomplish, but I think we're just, we're just spinning wheels, you know, far as what needs to be done today, you know? So I'm prepared to make the motion, and there's no other discussion.
But if your costs are this far off, I'm telling you that they're, that they're $300,000 to $400,000 off on my bid. What he just said, he said that the Hart price was a little over $500,000. That's what he just said, right?
Well, it's 600 and something.
That's, it's 675, but he just told us that it's 500.
Well, he doesn't have...
He doesn't, he's not calculating it out.
That's the per unit.
But if we're this far off on our pricing, there's something wrong. I'm not questioning what anyone did, but, but somewhere the math is wrong.
All right, well...
And all I was asking for was a chance to look at it before you guys make a determination. And if I'm right, then it works in your favor. And if I'm wrong, then you go ahead and make your, you know, you come back. But I'm not, but you can just go, if you look at the, at the sheets, the pricing sheets that were, you know, you're giving you, just one of the things that stands out, we had a discount in there or a, a trade-in. The trade-in's not listed on that. So that's, that's roughly $100,000. That's just one item. So if that's missing...
I mean, right, there was not a trade-in, and they're still cheaper than you. So, I mean...
No, but, well, that's what I, I'm, I'm telling you that, that our $1.17 million isn't even close to what our actual bid is. And if, and if ours is that far off, when I look at theirs, I'm asking the question, are firmware prices in there? Are, are, is everything in there? And I'm just asking the question, and I've been told that I can't find that out. And that's my problem.
Well, I, I appreciate you coming forth, appreciate you bringing these points to our attention. And I think we have, and this, this, then from his point, it'd be a decision of the board. But I appreciate you coming forth and...
Okay.
...to give us this information, so...
This board wouldn't act without all of the information.
Well, again, I appreciate you, I've given you a little more time than really...
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, three minutes went by pretty quick. Thank you.
I make the, like to make a motion, Mr. President, if I can.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion, we go into a, ability to enter into a contract with Hart Inter-Civic on a best-case basis with Mr. Slay and Hart, subject to, of course, you know, bringing the contract back to the board for ratification and approval, but kind of say it like it needs to be said.
Is that the way it needs to be worded, Craig?
Yeah, exactly as it appears on the agenda item. I think I structured that before I left town. That, that's, that's the motion.
Well, I'll make the motion then, based on what is, what is forementioned in the agenda item.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. Mr. Morrow.
A second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion? All afraid to say, ah?
Ah.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Next item is consideration potential action toward contract for government legislation assistance with Bernini, Gratham, Brewer, and Hughes for, starting in, anyway, you can restart, October 1st to September 30th, 2017. All right. Do I have a discussion about this or anything?
Yeah, Trey is here. You all come on up, or is this a...
Well, I mean, Craig's suggestion that we come and ask some questions.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to get...
What is it, boys?
We can go.
Well, I, I had one question. You know, whenever we were discussing, and we talked about anything above and beyond as far as expenses go, what, what would an example of that be? Because really, I'm thinking more along the line of Washington, and, you know, we want to try to get some money out of Washington for drainage. What, what we'd be looking at in Washington that would be, we're looking at as an expense above and beyond what we're going to pay you guys?
I would say it would just be the out-of-pocket expenses of, you know, any airline or hotel, the things you would normally expect going up there to advocate and set up the meetings that you all would be interested in. But I don't see any, any cost really, other than just those kinds of basic travel circumstances. You need to, I mean, you know, minor thing, make some copies of things, you know?
Yeah.
I guess that would be it, but that's basically just a, just a direct expense to be up, you know, in Washington and in overnight, you'd be on getting your own hotel rooms and things of that nature on your own budgets, but that would be our, our only expense.
So that's what I, so we would...
Thank y'all.
...be able for trips made up there by your employees?
It needs to be pre-approved. I mean, we wouldn't take a trip unless, you know, we counseled with all of you and Craig, and you decided it was worthwhile to do. And, you know, that would be a, an ad hoc situation where we all agree that's, that's in our best interest. We've got it all set up and ready to go, and, you know, it thought it'd be advantageous to be there.
We vouch on...
Let me just say, on the flip side, we wouldn't just be flying up to...
I got you.
...to do anything. We already have a partner who's up there in Washington, so we don't need to, you know, transport any of our people up there in order to set up the meetings or anything of that nature, so it'd be no expense.
Oh, so he's in Washington all the time, anyway?
Yeah, he lives in Washington. We have an office in Washington.
Was that the gentleman we met?
No, I was going to say, but that wasn't Kurt that y'all had. We have a office in Washington.
Okay.
George is in it. But Kurt, he's the one who goes back and forth up there, working, you know, with those connections. But that is not, Kurt does not work. Kurt is our partner.
I will, yeah, okay.
George, George is there, so that's, that's what, that's an advantage we think we provide is, you know, setting up all of this and all the legwork. He runs those routes and gets that done.
I'm going to probably state the obvious here. Obviously, with the Rankin County delegation we have, both in the House and Senate, you know, they have their egos to tend with, and we don't want to step on their toes or give them the wrong impression that we're trying to circumvent them or snub our nose at them or their ability to do what they thinks is in the best interest or what we would like for them to do on our behalf. So, I mean, obviously, y'all, day one, would be sit down with them and, and create that dialogue and, and say, hey, we're here to help, not to obstruct, you know? You know, I mean, I understand, they've, they've been elected too, and, and they represent the same folks that we represent, you know? So I just want to state it just to put it out there, you know, for the obvious.
We've always found that they welcome that kind of attention. They have 3,000 bills and, you know, six committee assignments, and they're running around all over the place, and the fact that we can help coordinate your particular issues, they feel they're grateful for. So definitely, we would coordinate with them, take direction, you know, where they thought it was appropriate to communicate to you. But they, they've always been appreciative of the opportunity to, you know, know there's somebody there that can bring them the information they need.
Well, we've tried for 15 years, well, longer. I've been here 15 years, and we've tried to get radar in Rankin County. And that's not a monetary, you know, something we can put our finger on, but it is a public safety issue that we desperately need. And y'all feel like you could help us and make this happen?
Well, I think, you know, radar is a, an issue that has a lot of tentacles, and we do the best we can to get your, your issues front and center, just like the airport tax, you know, exemption and...
Yeah.
...the other issues that we think are prominent right today. But that's what we want to get started on, is the ability before the session that starts, as you know, the first Tuesday in January, to get information about what you want, what you need, and find out what everybody else is doing too, so you can have that information, see who the allies are and who the, who the foes are out there.
Well, to me, those are two, those two items are the two things that, on a state level, we need help with.
Well, I think one of them's going to fix itself.
Which one's that?
The airport deal.
You think it's going to fix itself?
Mm-hmm. I think it's going to get fixed. But, you know, and I've talked to several, and, and some, not just in our legislative group, some other people that are out there that deal with same-type deal, and they, they really are not too sold, that have not sold me that this is a good idea for us. I mean, because some of the things that we're wanting, they, they explained where, where basically, we could do the same thing ourselves.
I have no doubt that, excuse me, is that, you know, look, we, we want you to be participants. I'm just saying, proof's in the pudding, you know? I'm not here to guarantee anything, but I do know that with the other companies and entities that I've worked for to do this, it's, it's a cultivation issue. I mean, the two issues you've mentioned may not be the two that get played this year. And having the monitoring of all of that is the first key step. There are a lot of bills out there, there are a lot of things you may want to play into that maybe you're not keeping up with, or vice versa. So I'm not, you know, I don't think you ought to look at it if I'm just telling you from my perspective and experience on any one particular issue or two particular issues today, because it's a long-term relationship. The value of legislative monitoring and lobbying is a longer-term relationship to have an impact, because, you know, today's governor is not going to be tomorrow's governor. And we're there to stay, and I've been doing this for 38 years, so it's a continuity to be able to go across the aisle between the Democrats and Republicans. We have that ability and have relationships all across the board. So, you know, I, I don't deny what you're saying on any particular, put a, put a microscope on any particular issue, I couldn't agree more with you. But I think the longer-term relationship, and we've seen other entities around you that, all the other entities, really, the key entities have those. So, you know, it's your decision, but I think we can bring value, and proof of being the pudding for us, we, we know we've got to produce. So that's why we want to engage, and, and you can evaluate if you decided to go forward on the basis of what we, what we can do for you and what information we bring to you.
Which is like the drainage, I think that's really important. But as far as in Washington, where that's going to come from, I, I feel that they would, we see, go see our, we as a board, go see our delegates, rather than just sending someone to represent us. And really, in the, in the big picture, it's a big cost savings.
Well, I think you're right, absolutely. We do need to go up there in addition to having somebody. And, and the meeting we took with them, the gentleman named off three or four other avenues that we've never thought about going into. And so if we don't know about it, how are we supposed to ask for it?
Well, you know, going back to your, your Fed people up there, they know what we want. I mean, they, you know, and they want it for us, too. But the problem is, you got to expand out your network to get to other folks to convince to go along with our state folks, you know? It's kind of like the Rankin County folks. Every one of them lines up for radar every year, but they can't, they can't manipulate, that's the wrong word, they can't coordinate with the other...
It's also agency, it's also agency staffers.
Staffers.
Staffers oftentimes run the show, as you know, and so the agency folks.
Yeah. I, I go back and forth with it, you know? And Jared and I've talked, and, and don't want to spend the money, because you don't really know what your end results are, but for what, where we are, I appreciate Jay's, I mean, Trey's comment, we are basically a business to some degree, and we need to be competitive in that same level and have that same influence out there that everybody, other, other big businesses that we're competing with.
Well, and I would just really, Bob, just real briefly, I mean, it's not just businesses. I mean, I explained to you what Passon County's doing, what Coastal County's doing, what Forest County's doing, what Lee County's doing. I mean, I want to help y'all if we can. I mean, you know, I, I was approached because I, someone thought that this was something that you, we could help you with, and I want to help you if you need it. I don't want to spend your money. I don't want to spend my money. I live here.
Sure, Bob.[1788.65]
I don't want to spend my money, you feel like you don't need. What I'm telling you is, other counties of this size sophistication who have the same issue, look, they've got, they've got their representatives, and they've got their folks who are, y'all are respected and influential people at the legislature. You can walk in there and talk to those people just like we can, but you can't monitor legislation, you, you busy enough dealing with, with everything that I see here when I come once a month. I mean, you can't be over there and know about three thousand bills and one, as this Craig mentioned, letting us know what's coming, that we had no idea what's coming. And, and they do this over there working for you, or they're here for the ground, on your behalf, for that reason. And all I'm saying is, that's what, I don't know, that's what other counties of that size, they obviously see the benefit of it, you all may not, and if you don't, I respect that decision, that, you know, that's, that's a hundred percent fine with me. I think it would be money well-served, I think we can help you. If you get to the end of the first year and you say, good, Grace, I don't see where they delivered anything, and you know what, that's just part of it, but I would ask you to take a look at it, and see if you get, you know, see, get some benefit, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm torn, real torn, just like I said, I've spent some time and talked to some, and it's, it's really like Bob had said, we talked about it, I'm, I'm real torn between it, that, I mean, it's not a, I'd like to hear some, some of the rest of you.
One thing that we hadn't talked about, and we talked about the obvious, radar and drainage and things like that, but the counties surrounding us have gotten manufacturing jobs, and we've got a pretty good county here that would, I think we're a great selection, but we just keep getting overlooked because of our low unemployment, but we have a lot of other things to offer. What can y'all do for us, or what have you done for the counties you represent?
I'd say we, we've done, you know, we're just, we are not just limited to, uh, you know, talking to uh, to legislators, MDA, DOT, a lot of other, we interact with all the agencies, and I think those kinds of opportunities can be matched up. We certainly would like to broaden that base and have those opportunities as we see them come to, um, make you, connect you with and support with you.
Well, and one of the, one of the things that Craig and I met, that is already on the agenda is, I mean, I know Larry and Tom personally over at the.
Right.
And we're gonna meet with them on this airport issue, but as part of that, obviously, we're talking about, Steve, exactly what you're talking about, what we can do to help in that, and our, you know, contacts, I mean, we've got Attorney Robert and Glenn McCullough, I mean, it's just like, I don't know, Bob's here, there's many contacts that you can have to kill.
Sure. Counsel of Manufacturing, Mississippi Manufacturers Association, Poultry Association, Convict Mississippi, Trolley Marketers and Convenience Stores, so I think we have a lot of other.
I would like a real nice hospital. You got a nice hospital, a big, a big nice hospital, and that has research.
I tell you, we, uh, that other counties are watching what we do. I got a phone call Friday from DeSoto County Supervisor, and they was like, well, I hear y'all are about to hire a firm to, uh, help you with some legislation. And I was like, how'd you hear that? You know, so, I mean, we, my knowledge, we hadn't been public about it, so, but, um, and they're doing the same thing, you know, and, and actually, we discussed possibly working together to try to get some of our mutual, you know, um.
Well, I was concerned. Address. I was at Rankin first yesterday morning, mentioned to Tom after the meeting that we were gonna take this up this morning, and he sent me a nice lengthy email, coming up with some different ideas. Asked him, I said, what can we do maybe to partner between our board and your board to, to work together, kind of share the, the bucks, so to speak, you know, we fund it anyway, but uh, and C, so, and by the way, Larry's resigned, he's going to work for Mississippi Bank, something.
Well, I can tell you, the key up there is, you know, and in feds, is the collaboration, you're not trying to be the Lone Ranger, you're trying to connect up into a broader base, you know, get some.
I, I'm gonna go ahead and cut to the chase, I'm in favor of moving and trying this for a year and see what happens.
Do you make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second.
Enter a contract, or I second Jay's motion, whatever.
All right. Motion made by uh, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bishop, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, look forward to working with you.
I was happy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Laura.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, I have one item this morning, is discussion and potential action on the recreation funds that's authorized by House Bill sixteen ninety-nine, that does sunset on twelve thirty-one of sixteen. Um, I've just had some, um, board members wanted to know if that's something y'all want to pursue again?
Yes.
Or let it go?
Yes, I want to pursue it, myself.
We do, I'd like to pursue it. It's not a tremendous amount of money that we get to spend, but I think we do get the help in some cases.
Well, we, actually, we lowered it, at first it was a pretty good little sum.
It was ten thousand.
It was ten thousand.
Right. We lowered it to five.
Now it's five, yeah.
Within kind of.
And most of the projects are well more than five thousand, you know, and, but.
Yeah, oh, I, I think it's a, I definitely want to continue, it's been a great, I mean, whatever you're able to do is, is appreciated, yeah, right.
Some of those projects.
Right, some of the things that it's used for.
I'm definitely in favor of it.
Yeah.
All right. Do we need a motion to do a resolution in favor of the legislation?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like y'all to go ahead and do a resolution, if you don't mind authorizing uh preparation for resolution of support, and then we'll get that to you guys, hopefully, by the work session on the third.
Will that be for the, is it set at five, or is it our discretion to change it?
No, sir, the, the legislation, and I don't know that there's been any suggestion about amending the legislation, Jared, but the legislation will authorize up to fifty thousand annually. You guys obviously can.
Okay.
Commit among yourselves to keep it at that twenty-five thousand level.
Right.
But you'll have the authority to go to fifty.
That's fine, I just was wondering if it's something we need to address, but I do remember it being that way in the past, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Okay.
Some moves, I'll make that.
All right, motion from Mr. Cross.
A second.
Second, Mr. Gaines, and Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right.
We'll do a resolution for the third.